I'm going to go ahead and call to order this work session for September 22nd, 2021. And the first item on our agenda is planning's Assistant Director Ms. Nestor Jellin on a couple of ordinances. Good morning.
Hi.
Again.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a brief PowerPoint that I'd like to just walk through to explain these ordinances. And then, of course, at the regular session, I'll also make sure to explain this in more detail. But just want to give you a brief overview of the two ordinance amendments. The first one is 2021-37, and this is changes to Chapter 802. And the uses that are most directly impacted are home-based business, home occupation, general contractor, and artisan crafts. The purpose of this amendment is to try to clean up a little bit of our home-based business and home occupation uses, but also allow another avenue for people in the county that wish to have outdoor storage or contractor-type uses in rural areas. So we're adding in conditional use of general contractor and then cleaning up some artisan crafts to allow that in business zones. So the home-based business and the home occupation uses, you can consider the home occupation to be the more stringent use because it's limited to a certain percent, 25% of the residential structure. The home-based business is a little bit more lenient and that it's in the home or in an accessory structure. Both of these text amendments to the definitions are the same. We're allowing exceptions for people that don't have any evidence that there is a business happening at the property. And this is as a result of COVID, a lot of people working from home. We wanted a little more clarification in our definitions to be able to say you do need a home-based business or home occupation, or you do not. So here are the exceptions here. They're included as well in the packet. Essentially, like I mentioned, if you can't tell from the outside of businesses occurring, it's likely no permit would be needed. So general contractor use, we're amending that definition to include any construction work and examples of plumbing, landscaping, electrical, things like that, to, I guess, accommodate a lot of the contractor uses that we currently have in the county that may be under an old home-based business permit, but really should be under this new provision for general contractor. And then artisan crafts, it's currently conditional in the residential zones, but we're adding it to be a permitted use in the limited business, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial zones because we think it's appropriate there, especially if it's conditional in the residential areas. It's a permitted use in the business area. And that's for people that build, you know, artisan crafts such as like cabinetry or artwork, and they want to have that sold at their property or whatnot. So this would be a business use as well. And then for the home-based business and home occupation, we are striking the Condition 16, which offered a little bit of leniency to allow for outdoor storage of equipment related to the business. So we want to clarify that home-based business and home occupation should be conducted indoors. And by striking this condition altogether from these two uses and referring back to the definition, it provides a lot more clarity for staff to say, if the business results in outdoor storage, it's not falling under the definition. And then we're also adding conditional provisions for general contractor under the EG, FR, and CR zoning districts. Right now, it's permitted in the general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial zoning districts. Now, the permitted use under these business and industrial districts have a lot less conditions. So the conditions I'll be talking about in the next ordinance amendment, you should weigh in as to whether you think that is enough to allow it to be conditional, which means one Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, and whether they meet the conditions and they get the use in the rural residential zones. So as it relates to these provisions of change that I've mentioned, the Plan Commission voted on August 17th to send a positive recommendation to Board of Commissioners by a vote of eight to zero. And I'll go ahead and take any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from the board?
What kinds of powers of enforcement does the county have?
Sure. So if we often do get complaints about business activity occurring at residential properties, if we are able to see from aerial imagery or Google or other sources that a business activity is taking place, we will contact the owner and try to get more information and then ask them to fill out usually a use determination. And at that point, the Director of Planning will determine what their use is and what the permitted zone would be for that use. And if they're considered to be, let's say, a general contractor right now in a rural zone, that letter of enforcement would come next to say, cease and desist, and we can assist you in finding a different zone to fit the business.
Any other questions? Great. And the other, yes, 38. Thank you. I was trying to look it up.
Yes. So this is complementing the 802 amendment. So looking at these together is helpful. This adds the conditions for the general contractor use in the EG, RR, CR, and FR rural zoning districts. So because this use is only permitted right now in the ordinance, in order to add it as conditional, we have to add the subsequent conditions in order for it to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to be evaluated as such. So here are the development and operational standards that we've added together in collaboration with the Ordinance Review Committee, the Plan Commission, and now any feedback from you as well. So these conditions must be met, or else the use is not going to be granted a conditional use. So take that into consideration. And I have also some examples as well if you're interested. So the site must have a minimum lot size of five acres. The presence of a primary residence on the property is required. The business owner/operator must record an affidavit and commitment stating they will reside on the property full-time. Employees of the business living off-site may park at the residential location, provided there's sufficient off-street parking to fully accommodate the employees, and that they meet a parking setback of 50 feet. The number of employees who live off-site is limited to five total. No retail is permitted at the residential site. Any building used in connection with the general contractor use shall be located at least 35 feet from the rear and side property lines. No permanent advertising signs are permitted at the residential property. Hours of operation between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. And any storage of vehicles or materials used for the general contractor business must be stored indoors or screened on all sides by an appropriate fence or appropriate plantings. If screened, the following standards must be followed. A minimum six-foot opaque fence or landscaping that meets interior tree requirements must immediately surround around the entire storage area, meeting type D buffer yard in Chapter 830. The screening must capture the entirety of items stored, and staff has the final determination as to determine whether fencing or landscaping is more appropriate depending on items stored. Outdoor storage of vehicles must be limited to five or less. The types of vehicles must be included on the application and not exceed the county's definition of heavy equipment, which is defined as motorized equipment having a gross weight of more than six tons. No outdoor storage area may exceed 100 foot by 100 foot and must be located within buildable area per Chapter 804. Outdoor storage may not include refill waste. So these are the conditions. And we've spent a lot of time thinking about H in particular because the outdoor storage can be very... That can be the reason that we get complaints mostly from neighbors. So we're trying to mitigate complaints and also make sure that the use does not disrupt the rural character of the area. So I mentioned in here six tons or less. I just wanted to give you a visual of the approximate vehicle weights that we're considering and some of the vehicles that would not be permitted under this use as well. So I have some examples. If you have any questions at this point, I am happy to take those or I can walk through any examples if you would like to see this used in practice.
Well, let's take questions first and then maybe have some examples. Questions, Barbara?
I don't have questions. I think it's a very good idea to be doing this. I think it's been needed for a while.
I like the exactness of it, too, that it's very easy and clear to follow and know if somebody is not following it.
Yeah. Protecting the neighbors is key here. And that's evident in everything that's in here. Did you want to share some examples?
Sure. So the Plan Commission had asked that we take a look at a few examples in the county where we think this use might be applicable. We'll go through a few of these examples. And I'll just note that these are just for example purposes only. You know, we won't disclose the name or the address or anything exactly, but just some ideas of what this might look like in practice. So right now, there is an 8.8 acre lawn care business in the county. And I drew a blue square around the 100-foot by 100-foot storage area that could be utilized. So as you can see, lawn care businesses have popped up all over the county. And there's, you know, we haven't received any neighbor complaints on this one, but it was something that was brought to our attention by another landscaping company. And so this is an issue where we don't have a great avenue for them at the moment. They're pretty secluded on all sides. They're vegetated pretty heavily on this site. And we could have some standards in which they could consider becoming permitted. So this is an example of a site that would not be able to meet the conditions. It's less than 0.7 acres. The owner of the business does not live on the site, and there are too many vehicles. So just an example where it would not work. Here's another example where the size of the property exceeds the five acres, so 10.37 acres. It's a lawn care business, and it's pretty close to meeting the design standards for the 100 by 100 storage area. The screening and the setbacks would have to be amended, but that's something that if we worked with the petitioner early on, we think it's something that could be changed and easily accomplished. So those are just a few examples. The Plan Commission did vote on September 7th to send a positive recommendation of this change by a vote of eight to zero. So if you have any other questions, happy to take those.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Nestor Jellin? Do you intend to bring this next week to us or the following week?
I certainly can do either of those if you'd like an extra week in between, or I can send it to you next week at the regular session.
We do have another planning item on our agenda for next week, so maybe two weeks if that's okay. Would that be okay with my colleagues? First meeting in October, we'll hear both of these. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for having me. And if you have any questions in the meantime, you can email me or call me.
Great. Thank you so much. Excellent. So we also have Ms. Purdy here to talk about... So we're going to hear the parks item next week during our regular meeting. And then we have an update from Ms. Purdy on Historic Preservation Fund Grant Award.
Yes. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, we have some good news, and that is the Alexander Memorial that's under renovation. We started off with a grant that was received in 2020. However, it obviously wasn't completed during that time. And so we were lucky in that they extended it until the federal fiscal year of '21. And in addition to doing that, they provided us with an additional $10,000 in federal funding. So this is just kind of an amendment to the original agreement that I'm requesting your approval for, so I can get that sent back to the state and we can keep moving forward with this project.
Great. Questions from Commissioner Jones?
I'm just pleased that it will get done.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, well done on getting additional money.
I wish I could say I did something, but they just chose to do it. So I take zero credit.
Mr. Cargill?
Just add that this is the project that we opened bids for last week. We had a productive meeting on Tuesday and had some questions for some of the contractors. So that's still in progress. But I think the anticipation for the work we had bids for would be in the spring, early spring.
Excellent. Is this something we should wait on until next week for our regular meeting? Or is there an urgency?
I think you can just approve it today. And since it's basically an amendment, we can just go.
Yeah, because it's an amendment, we don't have to ratify it. It's just an amendment. Okay, great. Can I get a motion?
I move approval of the extension of the grant and the extra $10,000 for the Alexander Memorial.
Second.
Motion in a second. See if there's any public comments on this item. Seeing none, Mr. Cargill, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is regarding space needs. And Professor Rana?
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me? Sure, can. Okay, great. Hello, good morning again. And my name is Shruti Rana, for those of you on the call who I haven't met yet. And I'm a member of the Monroe County Election Board and a Democratic appointee. I'd like to start again by thanking you for the opportunity to speak here today at this work session. And so what I wanted to do today was present a brief update on behalf of the election board and then also to discuss both our space needs and requests, as well as some upcoming developments to improve access to voting in the community. So first, just to share for the members of the public as well as the commissioners, our next election board meeting is Thursday, October 7th at 1:00 p.m. And we have access information on the website, and access will be available over Zoom. So I encourage members of the public to attend and share their thoughts with us. Second, I wanted to make an announcement about voter registration. As you might have heard, there is a National Voter Registration Day on Tuesday, September 28th, so coming up. And here in Monroe County, we have five local nonpartisan organizations that are participating in that event. The League of Women Voters of Monroe and Bloomington, Monroe County, Monroe County Branch of NAACP, the Monroe County Chapter of NOW, Reverse Citizens United, and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. They are holding numerous voter registration events around Monroe County on that day, including at the Monroe County Public Library, My Sister's Closet, Election Central, I think Morgan Stern's Bookstore also, Meadowwood and Ivy Tech Community College. I think I listed all of them. So I just really urge anyone who's not registered to go to one of those events and get registered. People who are registered, thank you so much. And I hope that you can join these and other efforts to register and improve access to the ballot for our entire community. So third, I'd like to move to discuss the vote expansion proposals and some of the discussion that happened earlier in the meeting this morning. So, you know, I want to start by saying that I reiterate what I think were Clerk Brown's really eloquent statements and updates to the commissioners in our past meetings, where she's really carefully detailed the space, security, and ballot integrity needs at Election Central and the need to expand into the building as a whole. And, you know, as you know, that request had and has the full support of the election board. So I know that you've been considering these and other requests to add voting space. And I'm really pleased to note that you're in favor of expanding satellite locations and possibly vote centers as a long-term plan. This morning, you indicated that you're waiting a response, you're waiting for a response to your proposal that you discussed at the last election board meeting a couple of weeks ago, where you essentially rejected the clerk's request for expansion of Election Central. So I want to share some of my own thoughts today. And then, you know, you'll also receive formal responses from the clerk and board. I think you've already received some already. So let me move on to, you know, my thoughts and responses to what we heard this morning as well. So first, regarding the proposals that you submitted, I would characterize that plan as rejecting the clerk's request for expansion at Election Central for, you know, future or hypothetical expansion plans involving satellite locations and vote centers that you hoped that the election board would put into place. So I want to raise some of my concerns with that. So first of, my first concern is that time is short. You know, we have, I think, less than 200 days left before the 2022 elections. And, you know, as we've said before, and as it turned out that 2016 was in 2020, 2018, this may well be one of the most significant elections in our lifetimes. So I want to remind you, if we look at what's happening at the national level, today is officially the first day of fall, right? We had a tumultuous summer with the Supreme Court and national developments. But now, you know, waking up today, September 2021, we have, we've, you know, we have the certainty now that we are living in a world where our children now have fewer rights than we did. They have fewer rights than they did this spring, right? Because of what happened over this summer. They have fewer rights than they did in 2016. We know that over the summer, the Voting Rights Act was gutted and really limited, intended to limit access to the ballot, but also voter protection. Just over the last couple of weeks, we've seen that Roe versus Wade has been effectively overruled. You know, Indiana legislatures have now announced similar plans to put into, to put before the state legislature bills that are similar to Texas Bill 8 that led to the effective overruling of Roe. So, you know, we're in this position where we're sitting here thinking, which one of our rights will fall next, and how quickly will they fall, right? I mean, that's a pretty dramatic change from spring 2021 to, you know, just September, the beginning of fall. This is also against the backdrop of a pandemic, which has been one of the biggest challenges of our lifetime and exacerbated inequalities. You know, we also know in terms of elections, the Supreme Court has stated that it will no longer involve itself in election cases involving state election efforts, except in the rarest of cases. So we know that the courts can't help us. It's unlikely that the Indiana Legislature is going to help us. So really, what we have left is voter turnout, right? That's, that might be one of our last remaining bulwarks to address how rapidly and how rapidly our rights are eroding and how quickly they may fall. So I want to go back to my concerns about specifically Monroe County. So, you know, I said we have only about 200 days left to plan one of the most important elections that we may well experience. That is really difficult to have sufficient time to approve vote centers or satellite locations. I have seen the election board and the county clerk perform miracles. I just don't think, you know, we want to depend on miracles. So even if there was enough time or our election staff made these Herculean efforts that they have done in the past, I think vote centers and satellite locations would be difficult to, you know, even if we had approval today, it would be really difficult to put into place over, you know, in the time we have left before the 2022 elections. So, but in, you know, regards to your specific proposal and, you know, thought that there could be expansion to satellite locations, I do also want to raise a significant concern that I haven't seen any assurance that you've secured or even attempted to secure bipartisan agreement for expansion outside of the clerk's plan, which does have bipartisan support. And, you know, as I, and I just wanted to raise that because as I mentioned, when you visited us at the election board meeting, I was concerned that you were failing to adequately consider the plan put forward by our county clerk, who is not only an elected official elected by our voters, but her job is to be responsible for contingency planning, disaster planning, securing ballot integrity, looking at how the different processes work. And, you know, she and her staff spend enormous amount of time and effort looking at the various options and trying to come up with the best plans for our voters. So, you know, she presented this carefully considered plan with a lot of input from the staff and other kind of county clerks, input from voters. And, you know, I felt that in return, you know, rather than really deeply engaging with that plan, you submitted at our election board meeting hopes for future satellite voting centers, you know. And I share those hopes. That would be wonderful if we could expand centers. We could have vote centers. But, you know, I assume that you're aware, as many other people noted before me this morning, that satellite expansion plans, as well as a move to vote centers, require bipartisan support, and in particular, the support of the Republican Party Chair, right? It's not the election board necessarily. It's the Republican Party Chair who has to agree to satellite locations. The election board doesn't have control over his approval. And I really think, you know, we should avoid a situation where we create a situation where we are empowering the Republican Party Chair to be able to veto expansion plans in an overwhelmingly Democratic party, so, or, you know, community. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And, you know, when we propose new election plans, you know, they should be carefully considered and vetted, and I think need to be much more than bullet points on a PowerPoint. You know, as other people noted, we need to be doing race and equity analyses to make sure that voters' needs are carefully considered. There's accessibility issues, safety, potential for confusion, security. All of these things and others require careful consideration and planning, which is what we have our county election staff there to do, and they have done. So, you know, so that's to say that I share the concerns of others who spoke during public comment this morning. And, you know, I want to say a little bit more about my personal thoughts about that, which is that I'm concerned about the appearance of kind of punting the issue and putting our voters, our county's voters, in a difficult position. You know, and I personally am the Democratic appointee. I'm speaking today to you all as Democratic commissioners. I'm concerned about the lack of unity and really just practicality and efficiency, right? You know, as I said, time is short. It should go without saying that we should be setting an example of unity, solidarity, and seeking bipartisan cooperation. You know, we can be a model for the rest of Indiana. We shouldn't be punting on complex issues and, you know, shifting the burdens to, you know, to avoid accountability or responsibility. And I just want to say a little bit about my personal investment in, you know, the issues of voter access more generally and why I'm sort of making this pitch for solidarity and unity. I've been a member of the Democratic Party my entire life through thick and thin. Both my family and my husband's family have long been deeply active members of the Democratic Party wherever they have lived. My family came to this country as immigrants. Parts of my husband's family fled Nazi Germany to come to the United States. You know, we do this because we've all believed in and supported the Democratic Party primarily because of its commitment to civil rights, its commitment to expanding ballot access, and its commitment to expanding equality. You know, that has not always, that those promises have not always been fulfilled, and they have been long, hard battles to get to even where we are now, even with the rollbacks we have had. And with all of the stumbles of the Democratic Party in the past, I mean, we can just look at the stunningly horrific pictures coming out of the border over the last few days. It's the promise and potential of solidarity and liberty that keep us going, right? I've always been told, and I tell other people, vote like your life depends on it because it just might. That is not the case for everyone. We know that there are people who will be fine in this country if the voting rights effort is, the Voting Rights Act is gutted. If Roe is gone, if other civil rights fall, we know that there are people who will be fine. But that is not the case for everyone. It is not the case for me. It is not the case for my family and my daughter. So I think, you know, I do the work that I do because solidarity, progress, and equality, I think, they don't, they require not gamesmanship, but commitment, compromise, and careful consideration, right? We all know solidarity and unity are so much harder to build than, you know, the tearing apart that we've seen of our country over the last several years. So, you know, I want to say a little bit more again about, you know, what's going on in our county and Indiana. You noted at our election board meeting that you'd consulted with clerks outside the county. So I just wanted to say a little bit of what we're seeing elsewhere. You know, we've heard from other county clerks who are... You know, we've heard from other county clerks who are also trying to get all of their election activity personnel and storage under one roof, that they really regard this as best practice in terms of efficiency and security, as well as minimizing voter confusion. And other counties are moving in that direction. And I think this is really a time when counties like Monroe and these other counties that are doing this could really set the gold standard for the entire state when it comes to election integrity and security. We've also seen, as I mentioned earlier, that, you know, I mentioned that in red states, vote centers, there's been, you know, difficult issues with them. And, you know, we've seen that, you know, clerks and voting officials all over Indiana have raised concerns with vote centers, although regarding them as a great ideal model if they can be implemented properly. We see that clerks are saying that they've been struggling to keep equipment in voting areas clean between voters in the vote centers, they're struggling to get personal protective equipment, we're still in the pandemic, I hope we'll be out of it soon, but we just don't know. So, you know, the, the long and short of it is that vote centers, even if we could get them approved in a bipartisan way in Monroe County, even if we could get them approved and had people carefully do all of these studies, you know, with enough time to put them into place for 2022, they're still not magic bullets, right? They're good things to have if we can do them properly and have the time to do them properly. But, you know, again, once again, we need bipartisan support that, you know, I've not heard anyone say that there is, or that we have, or that even there's been movement towards that. And, you know, again, that's outside of the purview of the election board. We cannot control what the various parties do and whether they approve satellite locations or not. So I just wanted to say, you know, lastly, you know, why are we so focused on these issues of voter inconvenience, right? We've been saying voter inconvenience can be voter suppression. This, this is, you know, quoting directly the Supreme Court over, cases over the summer that gutted the Voting Rights Act. And I mentioned in my last presentation to, to you, to the commissioners, that we've had seismic changes in election law, as well as the composition of the Supreme Court in, since 2013, right? When the vote Shelby County was decided. What happened in 2013 made a big difference for turnout in the 2016 election, and we know what the consequences of that were. If we move backwards even further, you know, where will we end up? And, you know, I just wanted to quote a little bit of Justice Kagan's, you know, really stinging dissent to Justice Alito's opinion this summer in the Bernovich case, where the justice, the majority opinion basically green-lighted putting burdens on voters, even if they were racially disproportionate or discriminatory, so long as the, the judge felt that they were sort of minimal burdens. So Justice Kagan said, she said, "What's a mere inconvenience or usual burden anyway?" She gave this example, "Considering the law banning the handing out of water to voters, that's no more than, or not even an inconvenience when lines are short, but what if, as they are in some neighborhoods, hours long?" Right? We don't, these can, a small, minimal burden, just like we've seen in reproductive justice cases, can become an insurmountable obstacle very quickly. And Justice Kagan said that judges don't have the ability to decide these things because they're not sitting there on the ground. And I think that makes a lot of sense. And what I would say is, well, what do we know? What do we know about the burdens on voters? We know that long lines and wait times are going to exacerbate the impact of any burden at all, whether it's a mild inconvenience, it's not having enough water, it's a sunny day, whatever it is, just putting in long lines and waiting times will exacerbate the impact of whatever burdens there might be. So I just think we shouldn't risk that in Monroe County. I think, I want to ask for your cooperation, support, and consideration. And, you know, if their position is to really leave the people of Monroe County and the election board in a situation where, as I said before, we're forced to make lemonade out of lemons, you know, then I really urge you to reconsider and think about how we can put Monroe County voters first. So I think I've taken up a lot of your time today, so I'll stop with that, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have some, and, you know, you'll be receiving further response from the county clerk. Thank you.
See if my colleagues have any statements.
Well, it just does occur to me that it would take a very long time to find another location for the probation department, which is in the, the other part of the Johnson Hardware building. A new location would almost certainly have to be heavily remodeled for them because they also have pretty big security concerns. And then, once all of that had happened, we would need to remodel the current Johnson Hardware building to accomplish all that's being asked for. So I think we're up against a time crunch, no matter how we look at it. And I, I believe you said that the probation department could be moved something like 45 feet down the street. I'm a little curious about just where that is. Do we own property there?
I believe that you're referring to a statement by either the clerk or the election board member about the 45 feet, but I think, I think there's a couple of things going on. I think, number one, I thought that the plans in Monroe County were to have a consolidated justice center, which would include the probation center, and that's where things were, were headed. So the, you know, that, that justice center is not going to be at Election Central, so, you know, the probation office is going to have to move at some point. And I believe the 45 feet was a reflection or a reference to some of the space that had been offered for voter expansion or for, you know, expansion of early voting sites or something like that. And I think that there were, in the past, we've seen a number of problems raised with the different locations when, you know, and the clerk can say more about this, but when the showers center area was opened for voting, it was just not accessed in the same way as Election Central. And again, you know, it might be that 45 feet means nothing to me as somebody who could, you know, run across the street easily, and, you know, I can find these things on Google Maps and all these kinds of things. There's lots of people who can't or, you know, don't, you know, and also have different accessibility issues. So that's the point that, that we're trying to make. And I think that when you mention the way that Election Central would have to be remodeled and things like that, we have, you know, produced clear, you know, really detailed and well-thought-out plans for how it would be remodeled and, you know, in a minimal, you know, with a minimal amount of effort. And, you know, in terms of what the probation center needs in a different location, that's not something that, that I can say, right? I mean, the probation center is already planning on moving, so, you know, what they're different, you know, or at least that's, that's the goal, right? That I've, you know, always seen. So again, if that's the issue, if it's, if it's that you think that for, you know, and, and let me just say, we know that the probation center performs a lot of valuable services, so that's not an issue at all. What if, what is an issue is that you're really concerned about the impact to the probation center for having to move, but, you know, I just don't understand why you're not concerned about, similarly concerned about the impacts on voters, especially for sites that have already been rejected for voters, right? I haven't seen any evidence that the probation center has considered, much less rejected, any of these spaces that you've offered. I haven't seen any evidence that they've considered or rejected, you know, the space 45 feet away, or, you know, really just anything at all. So again, it just, you know, and again, you know, this is a pretty, maybe this is a transparency issue, right? In contrast, the county clerk has produced all sorts of information about space expansion, how it would work, where it would be, you know, down to, you know, the number of inches that are needed for different things. So, I mean, if it's, if it's a transparency issue, that's a different thing. But, you know, that's, that would be my response, or at least my initial response.
Well, I would like to point out that the Johnson Hardware has very inadequate parking, which impacts people with mobility issues a whole lot more than actually being able to go to a place where there's plenty of parking and it is accessible. And as for a new consolidated justice building, that is something that is quite a ways in the future. We cannot just create one out of nothing in 200 days. That's, that's not actually a very reasonable request. So you're suggesting that probation be moved twice, which is also a pretty difficult thing to accomplish. Unfortunately, the commissioners are not able to look at just one issue. We have to consider the entire county and everything that we're responsible for in the county. We do our very best, we try really hard, we have tried very hard to come up with adequate space for elections. It is routinely rejected, no matter what we come up with. It kind of appears that it's simply not going to be possible to work this out because the clerk has decided that there's only one possible solution. Or maybe it's the election board has decided that. I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
So let me go.
Let's, um, let's continue on with, with, unless that was, was that a question, Commissioner Jones, or just?
No, it wasn't. No, I was simply pointing out some facts.
Yeah, and, and we did hear from, I believe, I, I'm trying to remember who it was, but somebody from the election board had said, "We're coming back to you with more information once we talked about the spaces that were available." So that's what we're waiting on. So to pressure us and to say, "What's your response?" Well, we don't have information back. So my concern is this, we continue to have discussions here with, with one member of the election board. I don't know why we're not creating a working group and actually tackling this together, rather than having these statements back and forth. I would prefer that we do that, and we will go ahead and attend your election board meeting, and hopefully we can get going on this, rather than having statements. I, I don't believe it's accurate to question our intentions or our desires because we have all said, and I can state it again, that we want open, fair, and accessible elections for every eligible voter in Monroe County. Our task is related to building space. As you know, we cannot require voting centers, we cannot require satellite voting, we want to see those things, satellite early voting, we want to see those things badly, but we can't make that happen. But we certainly aren't going to attend election board meetings and go on about them because that's not our job. Our job is to talk about space needs. So let me, maybe it would help if I framed our, the discussion this way. If, if, which I don't, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but if you have the entirety of Johnson Hardware building, the second floor would not be used for voting. It would be the, the main floor, correct? So why not use the main floor for voting and move ballot processing elsewhere? Move other elements that are on the main floor elsewhere? I think that's not going to help much because you only have one door in and one door out. That doesn't change having a second floor. A second floor doesn't change the amount of space you have for voting, and a second floor does not give you more egress than ingress. So, so what we are proposing is to utilize space for satellite voting or, or ballot processing, or other functions that are currently housed on the main floor of Johnson. Again, that's not for us to determine, that's for the election board and the clerk to determine. What we can do is offer space. Because we cannot feasibly offer you the second floor of Johnson Hardware, let's move on to what we can offer and talk through those items, and, and let's figure out how we can accommodate and work together, because that's what we all want, we all want to work together, to figure out how to utilize the space that we've offered. If we need to make a remodel, we can do that. This can easily be done before the, the needs arise for elections and in the spring. I know it's coming up quick, we have redistricting we have to deal with. We have a lot on our plates, as always, and I know that you appreciate that because you know what we've been through this, just on this agenda, and this was a very light agenda. We have a lot we deal with, and, and, and we really want this to be done right. We want a long-term solution that works for everybody. It may not be what, what, what is being asked for in terms of the space, but if we can give you the equivalent of the second floor of Johnson Hardware in space somewhere nearby for the things that you want for ballot processing and other things, then why isn't that reasonable? And so we will come on October 7th to the meeting, and hopefully if we need to, let's establish a working group and get moving on this, yeah? I mean, it seems like we all, we all want the same things, and so I think we should be working together rather than sending messages back and forth at these meetings. I don't know if my colleague has anything she wants to add, Commissioner Githens?
No, I think, I think that my two colleagues have covered it very, very well. Yeah, I look forward to the next election board meeting, and I would ask Professor Rana, I, I was unaware until recently that it's the party chairs that get to decide whether or not that there are vote centers. Would you please send me a reference to that in the Indiana Code? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I want to say thank you, so I've, I've noted your request, and thank you also for the offer to work together, I think that's really important. And, you know, we also don't want to go in circles, and so I think, you know, many of the things that you just raised about parking and second floor space and why other locations don't work, I think have been pretty carefully detailed in the clerk's plan. And it may be, you know, as we're just discussing with Commissioner Githens, it may be that there's some points of confusion that we can clarify and then just really move forward and work together. And so I think we would all really welcome those opportunities, and I think that would be great. And just in terms of public comments and things, you know, we all think that it's really important for all of these discussions to be as transparent as possible and to have lots of public comment and participation. So I've been really heartened by the public part, comment and participation. I think people are really listening and interested in participating, and I just think as we go through these details, this transparency is so important. So I thank you for those and for these opportunities, and obviously, we're happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Great. Thank you so much for being here today, Professor Rana. Thank you. Okay, we have one other item, Allison Moore, I know you just don't want to leave us yet, do you?
I know, I just keep coming back for more and more. Okay, we have been in search for quite a long time, actually, in regards of having some form of a panic button, or some kind of a software program where we could have it at offices throughout our community, or offices throughout the county government, that would hopefully, if in a situation would arise in any department, they would be able to have already pre-established messages on their devices where an alert could go out to either say to other people, "Avoid this area," so that employees know not to go to that particular department, and/or to let people know that they could in fact, you know, have a situation where they want to maybe have everybody leave the area or evacuate the area of that particular building. For example, if something happened in the treasurer's office and the commissioner's office on a separate floor, but it's the same building, would be notified that they could in fact need to leave that building for a particular reason, without making a phone call, or without there being a very much of a distraction for whatever that situation may be. So we've looked at various companies, and we narrowed down to this particular company, it's called Team Alert, and we did a demo with Angie Purdy, as well as Eric Evans, and we're just really interested in this, in this particular software. It's a cloud-based software, and so you don't actually have to have a panic button, although they do have devices that can in fact be purchased. If there's a particular location or a particular place that we actually think that a, an actual button might find, that we might find is necessary, that is an option that we could That is an option that we could, of course, add on at any time. It is something that would go on the computer, and that is something that we were definitely interested in. So if I'm sitting at my desk and something is happening somewhere else in the county and alert goes out to every employee, it's something that would then flash on my computer screen that will notify me. And we can pick and choose if this is something that we go with. We can work with the company to decide, do we just want it based on who's ever in that particular building? Do we want it to go to every county user? You know, maybe different situations will go to different things. And so we actually get that, have that prerogative to decide who would receive the message and what detail we want that message to be. And they can be pre-established or it can be something that can be sent in and typed right then and there as well. There's also users that can shut it down. So if it's something and, and it becomes, maybe it was a mistake, maybe it was something that didn't need to be sent. There are, we can set up individuals that can shut the alert down. It does have the option to connect to 911. When we discussed this, it was not something that we had thought that was necessary or that we wanted to use. But of course, I know that you guys, as well as us, are aware that we want all of our employees to feel safe and to be safe. So this is just a program that we could put in place that would help with that. Before coming to you, we did have the sales rep that we have worked with meet with all the department heads. At a department head meeting, there were a lengthy amount of questions and concerns that they had that were all able to be addressed. And the feedback that I received from those department heads was highly in favor of this company and that, that it was also something that was needed. So I know this is kind of a real quick overview, but I know you guys have had a long day and I, and I would like to just see if you have any questions about it in general. I highly endorse this program. I definitely think that it is something that we could benefit from. And I also guess, real quickly, want to add, Eric Evans has been very much included in this. He actually reached out to a couple other county or government entities across the U.S. and has spoke with like two, maybe three different other people that use this company. They think it's definitely worth the, the small amount of money that it is. And we're very much endorsing, endorsing the program. So I am in favor of it. Eric seemed to be in favor of it. He is willing to join Kate next week at the, on the actual agenda, in the actual meeting, if this is something after your questions that you may want to pursue.
I want to just add in, if I may, because this has been something that we've been looking for, for a number of years, actually. We used to have a panic button that was always getting depressed and there really wasn't an issue. This has actually been shared with all of our department heads and there's definitely an interest from them. And this, this project, this product can, can be made as grand as we like it to be for certain particular events, like for an active shooter event. It can also be dialed down as small as we want it to be. So for instance, if somebody is, has a customer who is advocating, they can let, they could let a coworker know just so that maybe there'll be somebody else who'd come in who's better at de-escalating the situation. Excuse me. So this is a, I think it's something that we really need in a sense, and, and hope that we'll never use for the, the biggest reason as to why we're getting it. So as Allison said, Kate and Eric will be here next week to get the actual contract approved. I don't know if we have an actual contract yet.
My colleague, my colleague said questions?
Yeah, how much training will it take with different employees to get them to understand the different levels and, you know, what they're sending out?
It's gonna, it will be a, an option, and, and not every employee's going to have the same access. So what will happen is they'll come in and they'll work with each department to set up their particular grid. And it, like anything else, it's not going to be easy. But the, what we were hoping to do is just have select buttons that they, that they can choose to depress. And then it's actually only be the department head who will determine where that, all that goes, where that information goes to and how it's responded from. So the general employee is just going to need to be able to know how to press the button. For the, up the scale, they'll be determining where all that information goes.
Is this a physical button or something on their computer that they activate?
It can be both. It can be, it can be a button. Want to get away from those because those cause problems. People hit them when they don't need to. But, and we, there's the option to have it on the computer, which is definitely, as Allison said, is what we're looking for, but also on a phone. So somebody who's walking into a building, if they notice something, they could notify everybody.
Would you have to have a code to be able to access that particular? Okay.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would, I would hope that it would be available on phones. I just, I'm not sure that, you seem to actually see computers as serving old-fashioned, archaic pieces of equipment now, and we're doing so much on our phones now. But it, I, I heard a small amount of money. Do we have an estimate? It doesn't have to be exact of, of the annual cost or the, anything like that right now.
I don't have that. Allison, do you have it?
I do not.
Maybe Mr., maybe Mr. Evans does.
Let me look.
Hold on. I, I believe we do have that information. It's probably not at our fingertips, but I can get you. I will email you those numbers here shortly.
That's right. I, I know if, Mr. Evans always gets the best deal anywhere. So you're the master negotiator. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be great to see this and, and, yeah, we, we do need to ensure that, and I'm glad that it was vetted before department heads to get their buy-in and have their questions answered. And so I look forward to seeing more about this next week. Good. Good. Any other questions on this item or any other departments have items for us?
Commissioner Thomas, I think it's, you know, if we add buttons and kind of additional things that we'll add in, but the old, the software itself is, is less than $2,000.
Wow. Well, it's monthly.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, it's monthly.
Sorry.
No, no, you're good. It's $1,600 a month.
Okay.
That's a recurring cost. There's a $75 setup fee.
Sure. Per person?
No, just $35. Doesn't say per person or anything, just one time. And then the recurring cost. So the total, yeah, so the total first initial investment is 1,675 and then the recurring cost is $1,600.
That's pretty inexpensive. That is, you're right. Allison, I appreciate the fact that you didn't rest on your laurels in your last week of work. Thank you.
Good riddance. No, just kidding.
These will be the Allison Moore.
Already.
But they're the Allison Moore memorial buttons is what they'll be, you know?
That's right. There we go. Let's hope we never, ever, ever have to use them. But I'm glad that we'll work together to have something for the safety of the county.
I look forward to hearing more about it, but we're going to miss having you talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? We do have an appointment that we need to make, Commissioner Githens.
Yes, I'd like to move that Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones be appointed to the, oh, but I won't get it right. The Criminal Justice Reform Commission?
Response.
Response Commission. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Too late to back out now. Any questions? All right. It's a good group. Look forward to it. And I know that, I know that Commissioner Githens is going to be attending and watching meetings and, and ready to serve as a proxy if any, if either of us cannot attend. And I know that's going to be very important. So just because she, she's not officially on the committee, I know that she's going to be just as involved as the two of us. So I appreciate that. It's on. So Mr. Cockrill, will you please call the roll on the appointments?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Awesome. And we are, we have taken the Seven Oaks Appeal under advisement and would like some more time to continue our, our individual reading and research because we did have a lot of materials provided to us, which we appreciate. So I would like to suggest that we continue this work session until Thursday, September 23rd at 3:00 P.M. On the same, on the Monroe County Zoom meetings. And we'll have to set up a calendar notice for that. But, but that would be a continuation of this meeting so that we can provide our ruling. My colleagues have any opposition to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will continue this work session tomorrow, Thursday, September 23rd at 3:00 P.M. And with that, we are continued. And thank you, everyone, and please get vaccinated. Thanks.